Good morning.
Good morning, Senator. How are you?
Senate will come to order. The hour of convening has arrived. Chair would like to recognize his very prompt, isolated senator from the 53rd.
Mr. President, that is surely true today. A moment in history. Today, in 1732, James Edward Oglethorpe and approximately 114 passengers started their trip from England to Savannah, and the rest is history. Also, the senator from the 24th told me it's testosterone day, and he needs a lot of that. Also, the senator from the 6th told me it's take a hike day. I don't know what she was talking about, but I take that literally. Also, the... There's nobody in here, so there's no funny going on. The Journal's been read and found to be correct, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The chair hears none, and the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to confirmation of the Journal? The chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. Mr. Secretary, will you please read reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Finance has had under consideration following the legislation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. H.R. 3 E-X do pass. H.B. 7 E-X do pass. Respectfully submitted, Senator Huffstettler, the 52nd District Chair. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on State and Local Governmental Operations has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. H.B. 3 E-X do pass. H.B. 6 E-X do pass. H.B. 8 E-X do pass. H.B. 9 E-X do pass. Respectfully submitted, Senator Anderson, the 24th District Chair. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read bills and resolutions for the second time?
H.B. 7 E-X by Representative Knight of the 130th and others. Revenue and taxation. Internal Revenue Code and Internal Revenue Code of 1986 define terms and incorporate certain provisions of federal law into Georgia law. H.R. 3 E-X by Representative Bonner of the 72nd and others. Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order. Suspend collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes. Ratify. That completes the order.
Senate's going to stand at ease for a moment until both caucus meetings are able to be completed and the members are able to make it to the chamber. So we're just going to stand at ease for a couple of minutes. All right, the Senate will come back to order. See some folks from both parties starting to mill around. Senate will come back to order. It's now time for our morning roll call. It's now time for our morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the last time this week, I'm going to ask that we dispense with the morning roll call.
The Majority Leader has moved that we dispense with the morning roll call. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and the morning roll call is dispensed with. All right, it's now time for our morning devotional. And I'd ask that all senators take your seats and cease all audible conversations. Ask that our doorkeepers secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize a senator from the 25th to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us our very familiar chaplain of the day. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Our Georgia flag?
I pledge allegiance to Georgia flag, to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation.
Thank you. Good morning. It's my honor today to introduce someone that's very familiar to this chamber, Dr. Benny Tate from Milner, Georgia, Rock Springs Church. On your desk you will find a book that Dr. Tate recently authored. It's called Defying Odds: All Odds. And I encourage you to read it. I've just started it myself. He just released it last week, and he's already sold more than 10,000 copies in one week's time. So it is only in America can a little boy from the hills of Tennessee, growing up in an apartment above a tavern with a single mama, can move on to find the Lord at a very early age and minister a church and find a church in middle Georgia. They had 25 members, which now exceeds over 8,000 members. And around in many campuses around the state here, as well as many ministries where they've been able to witness to tens of thousands of Georgians around our state. It's always a pleasure to have him here today, and I'd like to thank him for being here as well, and I'd like to give him a warm welcome. Dr. Tate here.
Thank you, Bert. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here, and certainly I appreciate everything that each and every one of you do. I have been here many, many times. I guess been coming for 20-some-odd years, and many of you have heard me. If you haven't heard me, I say to you what Elizabeth Taylor said to her eighth husband: "I'm not going to keep you long." Amen? But I do want to share a couple of scriptures that I really believe will be a help to you. The scriptures are found in 2 Timothy, Chapter 1, verse 16 and 17. This is what the great Apostle Paul said. He said, "The Lord give mercy unto the house of Onsyphorus; for he often refreshed me and was not ashamed of my chains." And then the next verse says, "But when he was in Rome, he sought me out very diligently, and he found me." For just a few moments, I want to talk to you about what every person needs. Every person in this chamber, every person in the church, every person outside of the church. There's something that I know about you. I'm not an anthropologist. I may have never met you. But this is what I know about the Lieutenant Governor. This is what I know about every senator. This is what I know about every representative. This is what I know about the governor. There's something that every person needs, and what every person needs is encouragement. Every person needs encouragement. Mark Twain said, "I can survive for two months on one compliment." I can survive for two months on one compliment. Many of us, like Brother Max here and myself, were old enough to remember Bob Hope. And Bob Hope was asked on one occasion, "Bob, why don't you just retire and go fishing?" And Bob said, "Because fish can applaud." Because every person needs encouragement. Now, some people don't know how to do it. Some people don't know how to do it. I heard about a little boy that was in school, and he was making these ugly faces. And his teacher said, "Johnny, when I was in school, I was taught if you made ugly faces, your face would freeze that way." And he said, "Well, teacher, you can't say you wasn't warned." Well, here's what I know. Every person needs encouragement. And get real, get real. If there's ever been a time that we need some encouragement, it's in the day in which we're living. If there's ever been a time that people needed encouragement, it's in this day. And here's what's amazing. Everybody can do it. There's a lot of things that you can't do and I can't do. But one thing we can all do, we can all encourage people. Now, let me give you just a few practical ways that we can encourage people. Number one, we can encourage people with praise. Bert was describing our church and school. Our church and school, they was telling me this week, they said, "Pastor Benny, we've got 205 people on staff." 205 people on staff. And this is what I know about every person on our staff where I work. All people respond to praises and raises. All people respond to praises and raises. Think about this world, folks. This world that we live in was created by God. God created the world, the rocks, the reels, the hoes, the hills, the birds, the bees, the flowers, and the trees. God created it all. And how was it created? He spoke it. We have a world because of words. I'll tell you what would change your world: words. I'll tell you what would change somebody else's world: it's simply words. How can we encourage people? We encourage people with our praise. But there's a second way we encourage people. We encourage people with our presence. We encourage people with our presence. Paul said, "I was in prison in Rome." You know, Paul was in prison in Rome, Jerusalem, Caesarea. But he said, "I was in prison in Rome." And he said, "Every time that Onsyphorus came to Rome, he sought me out." He was there. We encourage people with our praise. We encourage people... Tell Franklin Graham I'll call him back. I'm busy. We encourage people with our presence. There's a third way we encourage people. We encourage people with our preference. We encourage people with our preference. You know, the Bible says in Romans 12 and 10, preferring one another. Preferring one another. You know, somebody, Winston Churchill was once asked, "What happens when people go into politics?" He said, "Well, their head either swells or grows." Their head either swells or grows. And when our heads grow, we prefer one another. So I want to be an encouragement pastor. I want to do it. I want to do it with my praise. I want to do it with my presence. I want to do it with my preference. Let me tell you a fourth way we can encourage people. We can encourage people with our pen. With our pen. You know, I get a lot of mail at home, and sometimes Barbara, I'll get home and she'll say, "The mail's on the counter, and there'll be Central Georgia EMC." And you know, just to think of it, Bert, I've been getting quite a few bills from your insurance company. They'll be on the counter when I get home, and there'll be other bills. But then there might be a card that's written out to Benny Tate, and I'll give you three guesses which one I open up first. I appreciate emails, and I appreciate texts. I appreciate all that. That's wonderful. Instagram, all that stuff. But there's something about a handwritten note that still goes a long way. Let me tell you the fifth way that we can encourage people. We can encourage people with our purse. We can encourage people by simply being givers. You know, when it comes to giving, some people stop at nothing. But we can encourage people by giving. Winston, Bill Bright said, "I want to do, get my giving while my hands are still warm." You know, everybody we come in contact with, we lift up or we pull down, and I am convinced that God wants us to be an encourager. I want to do something today. I want to do something. I'm basically done, and I'm going to pray. Bert, would you come and help me? Come and help me, Bert. Now look here. What I'm going to do, men, I'm going to take Bert down. I took Bert down. I want you men to be able to see me. But I took him down. This guy that played football for Georgia. I took him down. My wife got angry at me the other day. She said, "You're watching entirely too much football." She said, "Benny, do you love me more than football?" I said, "College or pro?" Now look, I took Bert down. Now you all, you men are smart men. You're smart men. The Lieutenant Governor's a smart guy. He knows that I couldn't take him down. Tyler, the only reason Bert went down is Bert knows I'm a vote. Amen? So Bert went down. But the problem was, I went down too, Marty. I went down too. Now always remember this, men. Anytime we're derogatory, mad, and we take somebody down, the problem is, we go down too. We're in a corner taking somebody down. But the only problem is, you went down too. And when I'm in the corner taking somebody down, the only problem was, the preacher went down too. Here's what I want you to see. I'm going to do something, men. I'm going to lift old Bert up. I lifted Bert up. You know what's amazing, Jeff? I got up too. Because when I lifted Bert up, I lifted up also John Kennedy. And when we lift other people up, it also lifts us up. Let's stand to our feet and pray, men. God, as we bow our heads and our hearts in your presence, I thank you for these wonderful, wonderful individuals. They're servants, God. They sacrificed to serve the state of Georgia. And Lord, may you begin with me, and may I have a spirit of encouragement, a spirit of encouragement about my life. And may every person in this chamber, may we look for people to encourage today. And I pray this prayer. In Jesus' name, until you come, we pray. Amen. God bless you. You know, the Bible says in Romans 12:10, preferring one another. Preferring one another. You know, somebody, Winston Churchill was once asked, what happens when people go into politics? He said, well, their head either swells or grows. Their head either swells or grows. And when our heads grow, we prefer one another. So I want to be an encouragement pastor, I want to do it, I want to do it with my praise, I want to do it with my presence, I want to do it with my preference. Let me tell you a fourth way we can encourage people. We can encourage people with our pen. With our pen. You know, I get a lot of mail at home and sometimes Barbara, I'll get, she, I'll get home and she'll say, the mail's on the counter and there'll be Central Georgia EMC. And you know, just to think of it, Bert, I've been getting quite a few bills from your insurance company. They'll be on the counter when I get home. And there'll be other bills. But then there might be a card that's written out to Benny Tate. And I'll give you three guesses which one I open up first. I appreciate emails and I appreciate texts, I appreciate all that, that's wonderful. Instagram, all that stuff. But there's something about a handwritten note that still goes a long way. Let me tell you the fifth way that we can encourage people. We can encourage people with our purse. We can encourage people by simply being givers. You know, when it comes to giving, some people stop at nothing. But we can encourage people by giving. Winston, Bill Bright said, I want to do, get my giving while my hands are still warm. You know, everybody we come in contact with, we lift up or we pull down. And I am convinced that God wants us to be an encourager. I want to do something today, I want to do something, I'm, I'm, I'm basically done and I'm going to pray. Bert, would you come and help me? Come and help me, Bert. Now look here. What I'm going to do, men, I'm going to take Bert down. I took Bert down. I want you men to be able to see me. But I took him down. This guy that played football for Georgia. I took him down. My wife got angry at me the other day, she said, you're watching entirely too much football. She said, Benny, do you love me more than football? I said, college or pro? Now look, I took Bert down. Now you all, you, you men are smart men. You're smart men. The Lieutenant Governor's a smart guy. He knows that I couldn't take him, Bert down. Tyler, the only reason Bert went down is Bert knows I'm a vote. Amen? So Bert went down. But the problem was, I went down too, Marty. I went down too. Now always remember this, men. Anytime we're derogatory, Matt, and we take somebody down, the problem is, we go down too. We're in a corner taking somebody down. But the only problem is, you went down too. And when I'm in the corner taking somebody down, the only problem was, the preacher went down too. Here's what I want you to see. I want to do something, man. I'm going to lift a bird up. I lifted Bert up. You know what's amazing, Jeff? I got up too. Because when I lifted Bert up, I lifted up also John Kennedy. And when we lift other people up, it also lifts us up. Let's stand to our feet and pray, men. God, as we bow our heads and our hearts in your presence, I thank you for these wonderful, wonderful individuals. They're servants, God. They sacrificed to serve the state of Georgia. And Lord, may, uh, may you begin with me and may I have a spirit of encouragement. A spirit of encouragement about my life. And may every person in this chamber, may we look for people to encourage today. And I pray this prayer. In Jesus' name, until you come, we pray. Amen. God bless you.
Are there any unanimous consents? The chair sees none. The chair recognizes the Senator from the 53rd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. In honor of Josh McCune, I'm glad to be here in the well today, my friend. Today is Native American Day, and there's a celebration at 2 o'clock at Liberty Plaza. So I'd like to invite you to come. Senator Gooch will be in his Native American Indian outfit, his feathers, so that will be something to experience. But if anybody needs to be celebrated, it is our brethren and sistering, our Native Americans. So if you don't, if you're available, come to Liberty Plaza, 2 o'clock today. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Does any other Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The chair sees none. You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any Senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? Is there objection or adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair hears none, and the report of the committee is agreed to. The questions on the passage of the bills on the local consent calendar, all those in favor, vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machine. On the passage of the bills, the yeas are 38, the nays are 1. The bills on the local consent calendar, having received the requisite constitutional majority, are therefore passed. All right, it's now time for consider, to consider confirmation of the Governor's appointments, and I'd like to recognize the Majority Leader for a motion.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent that the reading of the names of the Governor's appointees to the various boards, authorities and commissions be dispensed with since they have been printed and placed on the desk.
The Majority Leader has asked for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the list of the names of the Governor's appointments. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and the reading of the names of the appointments is dispensed with. I continue to recognize the Majority Leader for a motion.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent that one roll call suffice to confirm all appointees unless any Senator designates that an appointee be removed from the list and voted on individually.
The Majority Leader has moved, has asked for unanimous consent to confirm the Governor's appointments with one roll call. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and it is so. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader for another motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Governor's appointees to the various boards, commissions and authorities be confirmed as submitted.
Does Majority Leader wish to speak to the motion?
The boards, that, that sheet's on here. What we're in right now is if you look on your desk, you have a list of appointees that have been with y'all for about two and a half weeks now. And we've asked early on that everybody go through the name by name list and let us know if you had any issues with individuals on the list. Now I understand that there'll be some comment on the procedural aspect of this and that is fair and fine. But the, I would ask you that without anybody coming forward and objecting to any individual member on that list, that you support and vote yes for the Governor's appointees to the various boards, authorities and commissions. Thank you, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 29th to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while I have great respect for the Majority Leader, he is correct. My, my concern with this is procedural. The Senate has a extremely important responsibility when it comes to these appointments. And proper procedure, in my interpretation and the interpretation of some of my fellow senators, is that these appointments be sent to each committee responsible for the properties or the departments in which these appointments are made, to have an opportunity to interview and review these individual appointments so that when this vote is taken, it's taken from an educated standpoint, other than the fact that we just sit and review the list. There are many appointments on here that impact District 29. And I would love to have the opportunity to have conversations with those individuals to make sure that their resumes line up with the responsibilities that each of these appointments give. I fully trust Governor Kemp, I always have. But procedure matters, policy matters. Once we start deviating from policy, then the practice that we undertake as part of our deviation supplants that policy and becomes policy. And that is not, not good SOP. So I think it's time for us to seriously consider following the proper protocol on these appointments. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Majority Leader, and I yield the well.
Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the motion? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 42nd to speak to the motion. She waves. Does any, any other Senator wish to speak? The chair sees none. Is there objection to the previous question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the previous, previous question's ordered. The question's on the confirmation of the Governor's appointments. All those in favor, vote yea. Opposed, nay. The secretary will unlock the machine. Fastest I've ever seen you move. On the confirmation of the Governor's appointments, the yeas are 35, the nays are 7, and the Governor's appointments are therefore confirmed. You're a busy man today. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 2 PM. 2 PM on Thursday, 18 November, 2021 pursuant to HR 2 EX.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
Rules Committee will meet upon adjournment in 4:50 at the Capitol. The Senate reapportionment and redistricting committee will meet in 4:50 at 1:30 this afternoon. That completes the order.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 28th for an announcement.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to invite everyone down to room, or to the mezzanine one over here, wherever that is. It's the Taiwan Caucus and its Director General Wong is inviting everyone to attend. There will be lunches provided, so please stop by and see Director General Elliott Wong. He's a great guy, and I've gotten to know him over the past few months. And we've got a lot of great things going on from Taiwan and this state, and, and just invite everybody over to come be a part. Thank you.
Any other Senator wish to make an announcement? The Majority Leader has moved. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th for an announcement.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As we, as we prepare to leave the chamber, I want to remind people that tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday, the Working Families Caucus has a special event that features the U.S. Secretary of Labor, Marty Walsh, who will be presenting remarks to us in a Zoom call. And the event is in Room 307, CLOB, tomorrow at 11:45. So you can come in and get an opportunity to hear from Washington on labor policy, have questions and a dialogue, and enjoy some lunch. And we want to thank our sponsors for making that possible. Thank you. That's 11:45 to 1 o'clock tomorrow in CLOB 307. Box lunches will be there, and you can pick them up and go to your office and zoom in as you wish, or stay in the, in the room. Thank you so much.
The Majority Lea, Chair rec, he waves. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Thursday, November 18, 2021 at 2 PM. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
No.
I really do think the ayes have it today. Senate stands adjourned.